It is 6:34, so I will call the meeting to order with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please, Kelly.
Mr. Hazelhorse?
Here.
Mr. Beverly?
Here.
Mr. Kinzer?
Here.
Mrs. Levine?
Here.
Mrs. Maxi?
Here.
Mr. Mahal?
Mr. Rudy?
Here.
All right. That brings us to the approval of the agenda. Does anybody have any changes they'd like to make to the agenda? If not, could I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Second. A motion by Hazelhorse and a second by Maxi. Roll call please, Kelly.
Mr. Hazelhorse?
Yes.
Mr. Beverly?
Yes.
Mr. Kinzer?
Yes.
Mrs. Levine?
Yes.
Mrs. Maxi?
Yes.
Mr. Rudy?
Yes.
That brings us to the audience, to visitors, and having none, that brings us to the Treasurer's Report.
Yes, the Treasurer's Report is as presented, and I just wanted to let you know that in May's bills, they were accidentally uploaded as April's bills, so we will be bringing May's bills to end September. So all the bills are paid, but we'll be bringing back non-bills filed, report to you.
Any other questions for... Melissa? I have a motion and a second to approve the Treasurer's Report. You don't need a motion and a second, the Treasurer's Report is approving it. We have a motion and a second for the Treasurer's Report.
I'll make a motion to approve the Treasurer's Report.
Second.
Roll call please, Kelly.
Mr. Beverly?
Yes.
Mr. Kinzer?
Yes.
Mrs. Levine?
Yes.
Mrs. Maxi?
Yes.
Mr. Rudy?
Yes.
Mr. Hazelhorse?
Yes.
That brings us to the Superintendent's Report.
Yeah, just two items tonight. First off, our fiber has been run to the middle school, Manchester, Poplar Grove, and Capron. We're now waiting for MapleNet to attach their monitoring device in our buildings, which at that point then, once that's attached to the fiber, we then have straight lines going from the monitoring device to our switches. We're totally anticipating that that's hopefully done by the end of this week, and that our fiber will be up and running for next week. Also, I wanted to give you the board a clarification about our question that came at the end of last meeting. At our last meeting, I want to clarify our motion to go with e-learning should follow what was recommended in writing. Therefore, our motion to go to e-learning would be until winter break. However, I would ask the board to be open-minded. We may want to bring back plans to have small groups, possibly students with IEPs, EL students, other students that could use individual work with teachers, as well as five of fours, for in-person instruction down the line. That would be when we feel confident we can do it with spacing and minimal exposure for students. We also may want to revisit the in-person learning if the risk levels minimize significantly, and we can return to school. So those are my two items, Superintendent's Report.
Mike, do you have any idea of a time when that decision might be made to switch to a different?
Right now, what we're going to do is focus heavily on getting e-learning up off the ground and doing that very well. Once we get everybody in, I'm sure we'll start to hold those conversations about what that would look like and when.
Okay. Any other questions for Mike? All right. Policy Committee, do you have your report, please?
We do not need to go to any heads to be reported on. We have the second reading of the policies from noon tonight, which are all working to go in and running.
Okay. Business Services? For the Ed? For Tom?
Tom.
We did not have a meeting to hand? There is no meeting plan? Facilities and Long Range Plan, and that would be Ed, that would be believed at that.
I can talk about that for a second. We met last week on, was that Tuesday? We talked a lot about what's going on with summer work for the summer projects around the district. Capron Sewer is in and finalized. We're working on some doors at Upper. The carpeting is in and done there. What else do we have? We're waiting for the Capron Smoke Doors, which should be in shortly here. But really kind of took a long time to walk through all the different projects that went on during the district over the summer. Do not have a meeting scheduled yet. We may have to, we will be setting one probably shortly.
Thank you. And SCIA, we met just before the special meeting last week on Tuesday. The main item that our committee covered was in relation to presenting the tech plan and getting feedback from our three members about various levels of activities in SAMR model and some of the rig are involved with that, how we were evaluating the tech plan's rollout and efficacy. We did not get to discuss our assessment of our online learning performance and what our Curriculum Committee was going to be doing kind of in the upcoming few months and goals for the year as we're a little bit on our thoughts in our meeting. And so I think Carrie and I were talking about trying to have another Curriculum Committee meeting in pretty close proximity to this one. Intendedly, we were talking about the first of September. So I think we'll have an official date for that soon, but those items will roll over into that September meeting. Just looking at my calendar, first is what day it's a Tuesday today. All right, that brings us to the consent agenda. I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes of the special meeting of July 7, special meeting of July 14, the regular meeting of July 21, as well as personnel. Motion to approve the consent agenda, please.
I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Maxi. I have a second?
A second.
A second by Hazelhorse. You ended it personnel? There's one more I have to test it? Oh, I must not have the most person. For the...
Poplar Grove Bank High School activity account.
As well as? Did she have a motion for a second or a... Poplar Grove Bank High School activity account. There we go. We have a motion by Maxi and a second by Hazelhorse, including the Poplar Grove Bank HS activity account. Any other questions? Roll call please, Kelly.
Mr. Kinzer?
Yes.
Mrs. Levine?
Yes.
Mrs. Maxi?
Yes.
Mr. Rudy?
Yes.
Mr. Hazelhorse?
Yes.
Mr. Beverly?
Yes.
Motion passes. That brings us to unfinished business, the approval of the 2021 tentative budget.
We're asking the board to approve the tentative budget. It will then be on display for 30 days, and we will ask the board then to formally adopt it in September. Melissa's here to kind of give you an update of any changes and adjustments that we made since our last meetings. I'll turn it over to Melissa.
So tonight, I have the tentative budget for you guys. It's pretty much what we've been talking about, discussing over the last few months. There's been a few changes since the last, board meeting last Tuesday. I recently closed up our fiscal year 20, and because of that, I had to go through all our expenditures and revenues and align them to more policy what we had in the year, but just to make sure we had enough in our accounts. Some of the changes, I updated some expenditures for COVID, including staffing, training, supplies, and the dividers. I updated some salaries for changes in staffing. There's been a reduction, I reduced the IMRM social security revenue. We just had too much money in there, and I reallocated that up to education fund, and that's for next year. So we'll talk about that in December. Our CARES funding that we received last year is about $190,000. We spent it in last fiscal year, but the state reimburses us after we spend it, so that should be revenue in this fiscal year. And then I updated some other expenditures, like transportation, I reduced the cost of gasoline because we're not going to be using it as much. So as you can see on this sheet here, our education fund, we're projecting to be negative about $462,000. Our operations and maintenance were about breaking even with a surplus of about $2,000. Our bond is always negative because we have baked taxes, and so that fund is coming from our fund balance. Transportation will be in the positive, about $245,000. IMRM social security, those are the two accounts that I have reduced, some that revenue from the tax levy, those are both in the positive. Capital projects is about breaking even. Our working cash is more like our district savings account, so that one, there's no expenditures out of. Tort is breaking about $500 extra, and then fire prevention, this is where our smoke floors will come out of, so that's why that fund is in the negative. We're not getting any revenue, but we're spending our fund balance there. And so overall, our district budget is coming in about $128,000 under what our revenue would be. Typically, though, in years past, we've taken in more revenue than projected. I would spend less money than is projected, so I anticipate that while we still may come in negative, it's kind of, we're looking at about $100,000 potentially if we spend all of our budgets. Any questions on that?
Is there going to be support staff that we are not bringing back? That the numbers would have been reflected in here as produced labor?
Currently, right now, what's reflected in there is our support staff all back.
Support staff what?
Is all back.
Are we, I guess in the spring, we were required to keep everybody on. Is there the same requirement in the fall, and are they reimbursed?
It's not the same requirement, but we will be looking to do this, do something similar, because when we come back, we'll need to be able to staff it as well. And right now, what we've got lined up, we've got all of our teachers' assistants helping out and aiding each teacher through instruction, so we've got assigned jobs and positions. We still may have some staff that elect to take a leave in there as well.
I guess the two, if you have the, like, care professionals, I understand that the part, the two parts that would come back to me would be transportation and, like, cook staff and things like that.
Cook staff, we are planning to run kitchen, kitchen help at every building for lunches for every kids. That's our plan right now. We have four positions right there that are not filled, that we're not planning to fill at the moment. Bus drivers, our bus drivers, we are planning to bring back and work in towards helping with lunches, towards delivery materials, a lot of different things that they're going to help out with around the district, run the buses. Melissa, what else am I missing there?
Other than the mall run for the district, we have to run our buses. We found in the spring that if the buses aren't driven at least weekly, the barriers to ad, the brakes get bad, so we need drivers to just continually drive our buses to make sure the lunch run, supplies, maybe a library run too. So we've got some different things that we need drivers to be doing.
If we do not bring, or if we lay off bus drivers, my concern is, is if bus drivers leave, we will not have enough to run school or run buses. Because there's just no bus drivers to be found in the head.
But the expectation is in the spring, you remain whole on the transportation reimbursement. You're not expecting to get reimbursement with this?
Well, as of right now, I do not, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, Melissa. In the spring, the expectation was, is that the governor's orders said that those people shouldn't be paid through. They're not mandating that we do that. We're still anticipating our funding full to this point. We have not heard from them.
Okay.
Two different mandates.
Okay, got it. We may want to talk then some more because I, if we're keeping those people on, that would be an additional budget deficit if we don't get reimbursement for transportation out there. Or like if they don't reimburse our, the new buses that we just launched. My assumption was they made us whole in the spring. In the fall, if we're not transporting students, there is no expectation that we will get reimbursement for routes that we don't run. And so I would, is that reflected in these numbers?
So from my understanding from last year's transportation report, was that they go off your audited expenses for transportation, and so they were allowing us to count salaries and all of that in the report that we did. We're not running as many miles as we typically do, but they're still reimbursing, reimbursing us for the depreciation of our buses, for our expenditures, supplies, and salaries and all of that. And I have not heard that that's changing for this year. So if we're running buses for lunches, last year, we could count that as routes on our transportation report. And as far as I know, that's still continuing, but I would definitely check into it.
So the cut that you had in for transportation was more fuel-related and things like that, that you took the decrease on?
Yes. And then the revenue in transportation is from the report from last year's spending. So if there is a cut from this year, we won't see it until next year.
That's the only question I have. Any other questions for Melissa? About the tentative budget? There are none. Can I have a motion and a second, please? For the approval of the fiscal year 2021 tentative budget?
I have a motion to approve the fiscal year 2021 budget. I have a second.
Thank you, Ms. Maxi. Can I have a second?
I'll second.
Hazelhorse. No other questions? Roll call please, Kelly.
Mrs. Levine?
Yes.
Mrs. Maxi?
Yes.
Mr. Rudy?
Yes.
Mr. Hazelhorse?
Yes.
Mr. Beverly?
Yes.
Mr. Kinzer?
Yes.
That brings us to the second reading and approval of the policies. I have a motion and a second to approve the second reading of the policies.
I have a motion to approve the second reading of the policies. I have a second.
Thank you, Ms. Maxi. Can I have a second?
I'll second.
A second by Hazelhorse. Any questions? All right, roll call please, Kelly.
Mrs. Maxi?
Yes.
Mr. Rudy?
Yes.
Mr. Hazelhorse?
Yes.
Mr. Beverly?
Yes.
Mr. Kinzer?
Yes.
Mrs. Levine?
Yes.
Brings us to new business, the August 2020 bills.
It was my month to review the bills. I looked them over, and I would make a motion to approve the bills, August 2020 bills as presented.
All right, thank you, Mr. Kinzer, and thank you for going over those. I'll have a second.
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Rudy. A motion by Kinzer, a second by Rudy. Any discussion on the August 2020 bills? Roll call please, Kelly.
Mr. Rudy?
Yes.
Mr. Hazelhorse?
Yes.
Mr. Beverly?
Yes.
Mr. Kinzer?
Yes.
Mrs. Levine?
Yes.
Mrs. Maxi?
Yes.
This is the site-based reporting.
Yeah, the last couple of years, we've been sharing site-based funding information with the board. This is information that now appears regularly on Illinois State Report cards. So Melissa's here to kind of give you an update and an overall view of what our site-based report looks like for each of our buildings.
So every year, we have to take all of our expenditures throughout the district, and we have to break it down into each school that that expense took place at. So this is our second year doing this. The kind of history of this is to just kind of provide some clarity through our school report card on where funds are being spent throughout the district. And it comes from us, so that's a newer requirement. So they've always been included on our State Report card, but now we're looking at them by school, not just by district. And so there's just a couple of slides here that show, this is what it pre-looked like. So this was like the whole district expenditure report. And then the next slide will show you kind of what it looks like now. So this is the high school, and so it shows the actual expenditures per school now, not just the district. So to find our expenditures from the data, we can look at different allocations. So we looked at site-based, so if things were coded at the school. So high school teachers is a site-based expense that we code. Centralized expenses could be the superintendent's office or the district office. Those are centralized things that impact the entire district. So we looked at percentage of students, so that was one way that I broke up some of our centralized costs, was percentage of students. Another way, I broke up some of our costs for special education. So some of our special education costs were broke up per school by the number of special education students they had. Another area we looked at was the low-income numbers at each school. So some of our centralized expenses were broken up by the percentage of students that qualify under low income. So this is the breakdown for 2019, so this was last year's expenditures per school, per student. And then the next slide shows, this is 2020, so this is this year. I feel like our numbers are getting closer together, so every year that we do this, we're allocating funds differently. We're kind of looking at our centralized costs and where these costs belong, what we're doing for students. So that's, and that was what is going to appear on the report cards. You can see the enrollment for each school, the site-level expenditures that happen directly at that school, the centralized per pupil expenditures, and those are the district expenditures, and then our total per student. So I believe, what other questions do you have?
Any questions for Kelly? Not, can I have a motion and a second for the approval of the site-based reporting? I'm sorry, that's just informational.
Yeah, it's just informational.
Sorry. All right, that brings us to tax coaching.
So last week at the Curriculum Committee, I brought this proposal forward. This is a proposal to hire an instructional technology coach consultant from the LTC, Learning Technology Center, for the 2021 school year. The total cost is $12,350. This coaching package will provide small group coaching to all of our teachers three times during the school year. And the coaching provides small group coaching to all of our teachers in order to implement and integrate technology into their lessons. This was something that kind of came up last minute. We were working with the LTC to try to make sure that we could offer this, and they were working on hiring some new coaches because there's such a demand for this. So we were able to work with them. This came in late the week before. And so then I brought it to the CIA Committee last week, and then I'm bringing it tonight for their approval. So we are asking you just to send the rules up to Reed because we would like to get this person, you know, and this contract finalized in order to have someone to support our teachers throughout the school year. The contract, or the, you know, you can see here, goes through all of the different types of things that the coach could do. When we look at, I think it's page three of that document, there's a section, yes, that page, Kelly, right there, that says, what is the role of the instructional technology coach within the school? Oh, sorry, Kelly, we're down to slope two. And so there's this list here, and these are all different things that the instructional technology coach can do with our teachers. And part of this will be that they are able to tailor what they do to what our teachers need. So teachers in some buildings might want to do coaching cycles, where another teacher wants to do some type of work with their curriculum and technology. There's lots of different things that they can do, and that this tech coach can really tailor their support to what those teachers need.
Any other questions about the tech coach? If not, can I have a motion and a second, please?
I have a motion to approve the instructional technology coach.
We have a motion by Maxi. Can I have a second?
Second.
Second by Rudy. Any discussion? Roll call please, Kelly.
Mr. Hazelhorse?
Yes.
Mr. Beverly?
Yes.
Mr. Kinzer?
Yes.
Mrs. Levine?
Yes.
Mrs. Maxi?
Yes.
Mr. Rudy?
Motion passes. That brings us to board committees. I spoke with Mike, and I'm going to be bringing forward a tech committee as a board committee fairly soon. And I'll sit down with him, and we will work on the details of that to get that tech plan moving forward and hopefully within the year, have something substantive and complete that we can begin to implement. And I know, Mr. Kinzer, you had some thoughts on another board committee?
Yes, I did. Just for clarification, are we going with the interpretation of the board policy reference? Is it that we need board approval for the creation of that, or is it because the committee created by the president?
Once we have something to present, I would still present it to the board. I'm not sure I've looked at it closely enough to see if it requires a vote, but I would definitely put it through.
So then the intention to follow the two rules is that we would discuss it tonight? Any hidden ideas around it, and then we would vote on it?
I would hope so.
Next month?
I know I for one am not ready to lay out all of the committee structure and plan as of this point. You did a great job of presenting some details to us, but did you want to share your thoughts on that and rank?
Yeah, I did. I'm just trying to find my... What my recommendation was going to be is, in the board policy that Joe mentioned, they mentioned about the creation of a special committee, or a special board committee. And they mentioned when they have it, that it basically, there's a beginning and an end to it in that, you know, to find the purposes and kind of how it would be made up. And then it dissolves basically when you give the final report. My recommendation, and I can read it here and send it with that. I was, my thoughts is that I would like to see something related to the COVID-19 pandemic. Whether that's the name of the committee or not, but that would be its overall focus. And what I saw as the purpose of the committee was to monitor, facilitate, and provide transparent communication of the district's response to the COVID-19 pandemic. To keep the spirit of what that policy is, my intention would be is that it would report on the activity by issuing monthly interim status reports and recommendations to the Board of Education until a final report is issued within 90 days of the expiration of the governor, Illinois Governor's emergency orders. So the end of it would be is that when they consider the state no longer being in a pandemic emergency where all of those things are going on, the committee would issue a final report. I would like to, in like most board committees, the president would appoint everybody, but specifically, I would ask for two board members, the superintendent, the principals of each building, facilities engineer, and then the various, what I would think of as the leaders in various areas, like special education director, business manager, a representative for nursing curriculum, and others is appointed by the president. And so if he wanted to expand it to community members, or if somebody wanted to present it, it would go that way. My thoughts is that that committee would kind of take care of facilitating the monthly reports to the building, to the board on the current building status, issues like transportation, nursing, financial, expanding on financial, that they would monitor the budget impact, and that the committee chairperson would provide reports and/or recommendations to the Board of Education, and most importantly, would facilitate open and transparent process of the pandemic response of the district to the public. And so try to offer something in between where the administrators are meeting, where the board meets, and would have it more like our other committees, would be more open to public input. So that, as I looked at it, would be how a committee like that could function, could meet the requirements of a special board committee. It would be a board level committee, would need to be, in my view, created or voted on by the board. And I think under the, how we're going to operate, whether we discuss that tonight, I would like open discussion on it, what other people would think about it, and ideas that they would have, or if this is overreached on the board. But I'm looking at a way where we would be able to facilitate communication, facilitate concerns, and not saying anything to date has been done incorrectly or that this would be, in my view, just a more, an open way of doing it, so.
Tom, Matt? That's... What was that, sorry, what was the title you were thinking of using?
I just had COVID-19 pandemic committee. I just had COVID-19 pandemic committee. I'm not original.
And am I correct in assuming this is it be somewhat related to something you see going on at work that you think is quite effective? That, I think we discussed that your work has a sort of a?
Um, yeah, they, it's kind of evolved over time as they've gotten used to things. But it's kind of having a central, they call it incident management or things like that, it's set up to where people have a central place to where they can call and ask something, or it's recorded and things like that. And my intention in it was to get things just, I'm sure the administration and everything is doing that right now. But it was to open up the board, the Board of Education and, yeah. I would say it's, it goes on that. I didn't want to get too much of what, give you my feelings on what it could look like, but I was really interested in what, if any of the other board was interested in it, or where you would make adjustments to it and things like that, so.
I, you see it as, and I'm hoping maybe you see it, as something that might start to replace these weekly meetings we're having that are updating us, where this is something where a committee could be meeting and, or members could be free to attend those. But it would be presented monthly rather than us, because I think maybe to a large extent, what we've been doing is that sort of work in these weekly meetings that we've been having.
I think so. But maybe just put more structure around it. And thinking that this is going to go on for a while. Or at least the idea that it could be going on for a while, so that puts some structure around what the district's response is to it.
Does anybody have any feelings contrary to that? Does anybody see any concerns that they might have with the creation of such a committee? Mike, what are your feelings on that? That it's something that could be doable and then start maybe replacing these, the weekly meetings we're having?
If we think that that would help with replacing the weekly meetings and it can streamline time. I know with my administrators and staff, streamlining time would be huge.
Kelly, you would be fine with fewer meetings, yes? I can assume? How about the tech, did you want to speak anymore? But do you have any questions for Tom? Tom said that he wasn't sure how much input he'd want to put into the organization of it, but I see no concern. Once we have a committee, a large committee together, that you feeling very open with sharing your thoughts and ideas of a direction for it. Wouldn't be concerned about that at all. And the tech plan committee, it's, if we read the board's policy, six colon three ten, no, I'm just kidding. Two colon one fifty. It says that they should be used for a specific purpose to investigate a special issue, and a special committee is usually dissolved after presenting its final report. And I had been considering doing this last year when the board settled on its four goals. And its four goals were really to not result in the implementation of a plan, but the creation of a plan. And after that, after last year, with everything that happened with COVID, we, we were not as efficacious in creating those plans. So I'd like to see these, these committees really work to create those plans and put those together, make them a bit more cohesive. And I would definitely like to see them on the agenda underneath the board committees on every agenda so that we come back to them every month and keeps them on our radar.
The only thing I wanted to speak to on the technology committee, and Mary, you've been on for the policy long enough. For the longest time, we had a special technology committee that reported to the, was supposed to report the curriculum, and we just didn't, over the years, didn't staff it or, or things on it. And I, I don't know if one of the policy updates, it just, it wasn't according to for us. It just got taken off. But at one point, we did have and thought it was a good idea to have a technology committee that, and that, if I had any difference with what you're saying, is I would not make it a special one. I would tend to maybe consider that it ought to be a permanent board committee that provides, the idea in the past was that curriculum would drive what the technology needs were, or to look at it and take it down to this committee, and it could kind of go offline while they proposed something back up to curriculum. So it reported there, and it was specifically meant to include, like, business operations or office computers and things. It was really meant for the educational setting. And I, in a perfect world, I thought that was a good way to have it done because it was really driven by the educational needs to do it. So that would be my only.
I remember seeing it on paper somewhere, and I looked through the policies, and I couldn't find the mention of a tech committee again. But I know at one point in time, we did have one somewhere. Okay.
If I remember correctly, it kind of got absorbed into the curriculum committee. Yeah, I'm trying to get on the board, Joe. It was decided that we didn't need a separate knowledge committee anymore. That it just was be part of the curriculum committee, and it wouldn't be a separate subcommittee. It was just part of the curriculum.
I know, but I, I know I remember there being discussion of a tech committee at some point in time. But I'm not, and this might, could morph into something else down the road. But I'm hoping that by the end of the year, we have a complete tech plan, at least a shell of a complete tech plan. And then, then once we have that plan for the board to approve, then the details of it to be sort of meted out to whomever. All right, so we can discuss that more next, at the next meeting. Maul that over a little while and give that some thought. And there's nothing to vote on there, so that brings us to executive session. Executive session, if I have a motion and a second, please, to go to executive for the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees, specific individuals who serve as independent contractors in a park, recreational, or educational setting, or specific volunteers of the body, public body, or legal counsel for the public body, including hearing testimony on a complaint lodged against an employee, a specific individual who serves as an independent contractor in a park, recreational, or educational setting, or a volunteer at the public body or against legal counsel for the public body to determine its validity. However, a meeting to consider an increase in compensation to a specific employee of a public body that is subject to Local Government Wage Increase Transparency Act may not be enclosed and shall be open to the public, posted, and held in accordance with Act 5 I L C S. As well as collective negotiations between the public body and its employees or representatives, or deliberations concerning salary schedules for one or more classes of employees, as well as the purchase or lease of real estate property to, for the use of the public body, including meetings held for the purpose of discussing whether a particular parcel should be acquired. A second. Motion by Maxie.[1778.56]